Yes, you are good to start.
All right, I'd like to call to order the village council planning board joint meeting. Today is Tuesday, March first, two thousand twenty-two. I show the time at six oh three. I'd like to call to order. I show we have a full quorum with Councilman Mark Elise in Webex land, so.
All right, yep. And I would like to call the March first joint meeting with city of the village council of the planning board for March first at six oh three. And we have a quorum. We don't have a full quorum, but we do have a quorum.
We are missing Kelly Cates and Melinda Daniel and Kent Renner.
Yep, that's cool.
Kent said he cannot call in. He's having troubles calling him.
Some small animal right there.
Tell him when you're not.
Okay, he should be able to dial in. Make sure he's not in the wrong month.
He's on his perch.
We don't use the wrong month. I can read it forward.
Derek is texting. See if he says first.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
What does that say?
He killed an animal.
He's got some of those.
He's got like another bird coming in.
Because they were in the bush and they flew around and I looked down that and he went over the house and came back down.
I'm gonna resend him the Webex now.
All right.
Nature's not been busy lately.
No, happy birthday.
It's always not us.
Okay, I just sent it.
Two of them. So I want to push it. At first, it was a rat. And I was like, what, I was like, two of them must came back and then find out.
I just resend it. He should be able to log in.
Yeah.
No one else has a problem.
We're going, right? We're good?
Yes. Yeah, we're good.
Um, I'd first like to, once we've determined a quorum with both groups, so I'd like to consider for council, allowing council members to participate remotely, that would be Mr. Mark Elise. Need a motion?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Same for yours, too.
Well, we don't have.
They don't normally do that for them.
All right, so.
Rule breakers.
For us, I have adoption of the agenda. Does council have any changes or renewals? That said, I'll need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Austin, do I need a?
Yeah, you need to make the same motion.
So, so as far for the planning board, I'd like to consider adoption of the agenda as presented. Anybody have any additions, subtractions, changes?
Can I add one?
If you add, then they have to redo.
Well, let me add. I just need a statement on the sidewalk responsibilities. I'm getting a lot of questions on that, so if you want to do it.
We need, then we'll need to reopen the previous question for council.
Okay, so we want to address HOA issues?
Want to address the responsibility of the village of Marvin versus neighborhoods on sidewalk issues.
Okay, so we're gonna add to the items of discussion between the village of Marvin's responsibility and current HOA rules.
We'll do a discussion of sidewalk maintenance.
Sidewalk maintenance for H.
Responsibility.
Yeah, responsibility, okay?
That's what I'm.
You got it for you?
I'm good.
Is everyone okay with that with council?
Yep. Make a motion to.
I'm fine.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay.
Austin.
Yes.
When I sent the message, I see the banner Agenda Reorder. It's an orange banner that's across the top of the agenda. When it means pull to refresh, what am I doing to refresh it? Does something change?
Pull on the screen like you're scrolling.
All right.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
All right. Motion to approve the amended agenda for the planning board.
Second.
Who's second?
He's making the motion. I'm second.
Okay.
Okay, that's good.
John, John, okay, I'm good.
All in favor? Uh, Ken?
Aye.
All right. Ken Adams.
There, Ken just got in.
Okay, so we have Kent joining us now.
Kent is now joining us.
So I'm gonna mark him in.
Six oh seven?
Okay, that said, we'll get started. Items of discussion, B one, discussion of planning boards, two thousand twenty-two goals and priorities. Hunter, it looks like you have this.
So, um, just, you know, over the last two planning board meetings in January and February, we've been kind of discussing what the role and kind of what planning board would like to kind of achieve as, as they move forward, now that with the Heritage District off their plate and, um, you know, we've been kind of discussing, as I mentioned to you guys, I think during the council meetings, updating and revising a lot of sections of our ordinances, ones that are either problematic, contradicting, or just not clear. And so I asked him, you know, I'm trying to kind of, the way to approach this is try to have about two either subsections or two areas of the ordinances, depending on the size of them, reviewed and kind of recommended each month. We do currently have a text amendment application for some updated language to accessory uses and structures more directly referencing agriculture uses, as well as sections of the animal and nuisance code. So that has been the focus of them, or at least the last meeting, and will be kind of the main focus during the March meeting. But we're looking at trying to really have two revisions of those sections each, each planning board meeting. And then our, my intent from a staff level is to present them with the sections and the recommended revisions, get some feedback. Once they kind of approve it, we'll probably bring it to council for, during work session, just to kind of have review and discussion, but then do a fail swoop of ordinance revisions, probably do one in maybe June or July, and then maybe one at the end of the year. So we don't have to do a public hearing each month. Is there anything you want to add on that?
No, I think, yeah. And we've had conversations, you know, that, you know, how do we prioritize kind of thing and list them and stuff, and that's in the works. But, you know, so that somehow we have a, a detailed or semi-detailed agenda on how we go through this. And it will always be add and subtract depending upon, you know, what's found that all of a sudden we find, you know, Hunter finds, or someone comes in and finds, oh, we've got a conflict here, or whatever.
So is this, you guys showed me kind of like a hierarchy of a step process of what happens. That's part of this as well?
Yeah. My goal, especially, you know, from a staff level, is one, updating regulations. I mean, if it's our, for example, our sign ordinance, I think is, they're all over the place. So kind of taking the purpose and the intent of that and really trying to then clarify regulations, because it makes it easier for me to enforce. It makes anybody from the general public easy to understand, as well as just, um, you know, if there's any, there's no, there's no questions. That's what I've ran into anytime I maybe get questions if it's on a property or on permits. It's like, hey, what's the regulations for this? Well, I read it in one section and then maybe I read in another section. I'm like, well, all that stuff that, for the example, the tree ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, I brought it to you.
Um, and so, you know, the chapter, it's gonna, I'm looking at pretty much anything in the chapter one fifty, which is subdivision, one fifty-one is the zoning, ninety-three is trees, ninety is noise.
Sounds right.
Yeah, those are the four chapter, maybe even ninety-two, I think, is nuisances, too. Those are like the five chapters that I'm gonna probably bring recommended stuff, because ninety percent of it deals with zoning and some of it still then deals with my job. So I mean, it's, the, the main focus for planning is definitely, I want them to be, those revisions focused on chapter one fifty and one fifty-one. But kind of getting back to your question, the other thing is like the subdivision process. It can be kind of confusing even for me and as well to explain to applicants. So it's making sure that the process is clear and then killed two birds with one stone, developing flow charts for anybody to kind of simplify that. It's just trying to make it easier, like I said, easier on me and easier on the public and easier from a council and board standpoint to understand what their role is and what the process is and where those applications are in the process.
The only thing I saw was a comment on what I know. I would not like to see us change like the part where developer has an idea and a developer before he spends a ton of money on developing that idea like they did years ago over on Bonds Grove, I think it was, and Freeway. They, they came together with all this plan. I would still like the process to be, come in and talk to council at a fifty thousand foot level. Before you spend a dime, you know, are we warm and fuzzy to it, or are we gonna just say, you know, hey, take it down the road to another town, because that's not what we're looking for here. This saves us time, you time, and the developer time and money. And I think that, I'd like to keep that if possible, but I know there is a process.
And I don't know that that's even in the process. That's, that's.
He did that on his own.
You know, loose.
I know he did, but, but what we're saying is there, we've always encouraged, we've talked about encouraging developers to just, if it's something like a circus that you want to bring to town, before you go and spend all the money, just come to us, we'll set up a meeting, a town hall meeting, you can present it.
And maybe, maybe we add that initial step in, you know, because it's not in, it's not in the ordinance.
We have, we have the pre.
Remedy something to that language at the meeting, but, because wasn't that prohibited before?
Kind of. That's a policy. It, it does kind of intertwine with this, but yeah, that's gonna be on your guys' agenda, I think, next week.
I thought we revised, we took, we eliminated that language out of the.
We circled the whole thing.
Oh, yeah.
Just to look at. A lot of times, they're, they're doing it for their own, their own view, you know, their inside.
I could see it worked on that plan.
And what was, and I, and I wasn't.
Yeah, I know.
They spent a conservative amount of money to get where they got, and then it was sad to know that during the meeting, we still let it go on. We perpetuated the whole conversation. So that was the bad part, because that gave, we're sitting there and talking about trees and bushes and overhangs and yawnings and stuff like that, and we perpetuated the, for it to continue to go on, but anyway.
Well, no, that's, the way I like to, the way I've liked doing my job is exactly what I think you guys are asking. We just didn't have a policy that basically eliminated that opportunity, because I tell applicants anytime, you know, I'll give them my two cents, like, hey, I don't think this is going to pass. However, they have a right as, as a resident or whoever they are to file for that application and per, you know, state law or ordinance and so on, it has the right to be heard. However, I do think that's, I mean, I always do tell them, like, you know, before you invest, and especially when we come with Heritage District Submittals, I mean, that's something like, it's a very detailed process. And then, you know, if, if somebody's serious and wants to do that, you know, the, there's gonna be that money and time involved on those applications, but it's still a good, good opportunity for them to kind of pitch that and just get your guys' overall feel for what they're gonna propose or something in, in general, um, in those situations, because I, I agree. I think it's a waste of everybody's time and money if at the end of the day, it's not gonna, not gonna get adopted or passed. But I can definitely try looking at language to add that in one way or another.
Um, anything you guys have come across that throws a red flag that you've, I mean, you see stuff all the time that's.
The two things that I think.
On the planning boards.
So two things that I think this would be a good opportunity to talk about. One would be when I was referring to kind of cleaning up our processes and stuff, I think we have a very good, like, major subdivision process. However, to your point about development and time, it's kind of, I think, backwards, meaning that we have a sketch plan, preliminary plat and construction documents, and then final plat. Those are like the three phases. In most municipalities, like, the sketch plan is typically like an administrative approval. You guys are about to have the heritage sketch plan come to you guys next week, and that had to have PRG's review, planning board's review, now you guys review, and there's no public hearing or any of that. It's just like, you guys review it and then kind of approve it. Once that sketch plan gets approved, then they go into their preliminary plat and their, their detailed drawings. And, you know, that's one, I think, if, the sketch plan and a lot of that other stuff should be done upfront, making sure basically what they're proposing is compliant from our standpoint, because right now, there was really nothing from a sketch plan approval. If it's compliant, there's nothing really else to say. But that's kind of one thing that, just kind of clarifying the processes and stuff there to not make it as extra on everybody's time. The other one I wanted to mention that came up during the work session is the special use permit for the pools in, in the rear yard that abut a side yard. Those are ones that, you know, special use permits, you have a set of regulations. If they comply legally, it's kind of, you're not supposed to deny unless there's factual testimony against it or they're not meeting those standards. And if those standards are met, why do we, I mean, is it, is it really, it's extra time on, for a planning board as well as in coming to you guys for council on something that's pretty straightforward if they meet those, those setbacks and have the adequate stuff. And so I know that was something that was mentioned by planning, or by council at the last meeting, and that was gonna be something that was probably maybe gonna be on planning board's agenda for March.
There was something in the past that I think you guys wanted. The whole mantra is still look at.
There were, you know, some members of, of the planning board that wanted, and I can't even tell you who, uh, two or three, something, that said, I really like the idea of us seeing this. I'm not, you know, especially now after three years worth, let's say, you know, pool construction really just did this during COVID, you know, or maybe it's that way before, but that's, we really saw it.
It was, it did increase.
And, and so I bet out of, at least, probably eighteen, twenty that we've seen in that length of time, there were, you know, rear yard abutting a side yard. I can only think of one that we had any real conversation about. That was over near you, or, you know, over Firethorn, that corner lot.
That wasn't a side yard. That wouldn't even be in a rear yard.
Boy, it's hard to look at it from that.
It depends on how you, how you label the, the parking lines. And there was just, that was, out of all of them, that's the only one I can remember.
And it turned out all right.
Yeah.
It did.
And the two things I'll mention about that is that, one, in most of these where it's happening, they have to have HOA approval. And if they get HOA approval, I mean, that's what, that, that process is potentially gonna be getting the neighbors' approvals or whatever. And so that, the, I kind of just blanked on the second thing I was thinking about, but.
HOA and neighbors, you know, if there are adjacent neighbors.
Yeah, that's one thing I think that you suggested, you know, have you talked to the neighbors? Do you have a letter from them that just sort of greases the skids?
The only thing I would focus on, if we relinquish it just to use, I mean, and I just ride a bike with, when my wife runs and I happen to be in Marvin Creek, I don't know where it is, but I, I looked and go, oh, there's a side, a pool and essentially a side yard. And then I looked to the back immediately to see what kind of coverage they had, and it was wide open. So whether that was done before we approved it, or they didn't put the right screening in, that would, those are gonna be things that, the only thing I want to make sure we're crossing Ts, dotting Is, that that's properly screened.
Do we inspect it after the whole process?
I.
Yeah.
Somebody had to make sure they did everything they promised to.
Yeah, so with the, with the screen, yeah, I mean, pretty much when it's approved, they get the zoning permit issued. Sometimes they'll file for a zoning compliance, sometimes they won't, but obviously I'll kind of keep track with it and, and go review. The only bright side of, the only good thing about keeping it a special use permit is those specific conditions and or like those requirements are then tied with the permit. It, it still should be the same concept with zoning. I'll have to double check with that, but I know other places do, you've got a special use permit and then sometimes they have uses with special regulations. It's like the same concept, but it doesn't have to go through the issue, the special use permit process. There's additional criteria or additional regulations for those specific uses. I'll have to check from a, from a legal standpoint, but that's one way it could be done where, once again, it, it still has to meet the requirements you guys are, are wanting, but it doesn't necessarily have to go through that.
An additional list.
Yeah. Hell, yeah, that was, then that was the thing, is like, you know, thinking about your point about like what, us trying to achieve these goals and get some of these texts fixed, like, these applications that we receive take time.
There's a chair there.
Take planning board and council's time and that stuff where we could spend that time being more productive and proactive on those ordinance revisions, other than reviewing an application that meets the criteria. So, I mean, that's definitely something that we can continue discussing and can be a point of our discussion for our March meeting and maybe look back at our language and provide some of that research.
Yeah, you know, if there's another way to ultimately accomplish the same thing easier, you know, it sounds like a good idea.
And that's what I've noticed through the ordinances, and I think was it, and the mayor brought up a good point, is that a lot of the stuff, even like take the minor subdivisions, for example, once again, those are by right, straightforward, but yet still have to go get council's approval on those final plats. That's not, that's not typical. In other municipalities, typically minor subdivisions, because there's a state statute definition that meets that and under five lots, and the lots are compliant from our zoning standpoint, that's all reviewed, then it's a straightforward process. But, you know, looking at it, part of it, I think it is, so once again, that the planning board and council are in the know of everything going on, is that this is something like I could start doing like a, like in my planner's report, kind of a, hey, these permits were issued this month for this, this and this, to keep, I mean, anybody in the know from a council or planning board standpoint, because I've got a template. I used to do that in, for one of the municipalities in the first place. But like, if that's one of the concerns, not knowing or wanting to know what's going on, I could definitely make sure you guys have a monthly update of that for both boards.
I think that would be good. I'm gonna brace it near. I don't know what I was gonna do.
I have a question about that. So just in your experience, do, does the planning board bring up the same type of issues that the, that the council brings up, or do we have different perspectives when we're looking at submissions?
What do you, oh, from like a role standpoint?
Yeah, or just like when we're reviewing, like, the questions that we ask, are they this, or that? I'm just trying to make sure that when, when a parcel's going through a process, that if we're a filter, right, that we're filtering the same, and if we're duplicating effort, like, that makes sense, but if we're actually asking different types of questions, because we were looking at it from a different lens, then.
The only time that ever, from a planning board standpoint, that you guys look at it through a different lens is through, when you guys review anything from the DRB process. However, like for any rezonings, any special use permits, stuff like that, you guys are a first review recommendation board per this, like with the state statutes and one sixty D now, like, any of those applications have to have, be reviewed by planning board and planning board provide a recommendation. Council reviews that. I, I can't really speak for this council. I've seen it happen where sometimes planning boards and councils don't get along, planning board might recommend it, council will deny it, and vice versa. It just legally has to.
It's a good, if we're just.
It just, but legally, you guys have, that's where you have to say. Some municipalities would not even like, would expediate and just not, planning boards like would never meet, like, just because it didn't, it, the recommendation, it said that it was needed, but there was nothing really holding it accountable, like now with some of the changes in one sixty D. So, um, but I'm trying to think. So like with, with any type of land use like that, then yes, like it's kind of a first review, ensuring compliance and make a recommendation. If, but that's also sometimes where the staff comes in, because like they're gonna provide a report. You guys find something different. I mean, that's why it's nice, because sometimes you guys point out things that I either missed or, or you guys will bring up a point, because some of you have been here longer than I have.
Or it may give the applicant time to, if we bring something up, gives them a chance to modify.
Correct.
Before it comes to the council.
So, yeah, I mean, those processes are still, yeah, still good. I mean, but you guys have been, through my time here, as well as even kind of went back, have kind of been in line with your recommendations as council follows. And that's why it's important, because sometimes when council, I mean, they, they wear a lot of different hats and as in what they're voting on. And so having the recommendation from planning specifically on a land use or, or planning related application, you know, goes a long way.
What about, what about, so, okay, I just, I just lost my train of thought. This is the problem with having a meeting at the end of the day is the print stuff. I'll, I'll think of it.
Is there, I'll let you keep thinking about it. If you think about it, I don't wanna, I'm trying to think. Is there anything else like planning or, um, goals and priorities that?
I know.
Okay.
Um, with. Here's what I found. Thanks, Terry, so much. You're so helpful. Ordinances that match the land use plan. I know that we haven't quite gotten there yet, so with the ordinance is not quite completely lining up with the land use plan, you know, taking things outside of planning board's review.
So that's where in non-application status, and that's what we're kind of doing with these revisions and stuff, is that proactive planning board and stuff like, once again, land use plans have these recommended, recommended goals, policies, whatever. Ordinances, though, have to be adopted to align with these or be consistent with. So there's certain things in here that our ordinances are, you know, either lacking, don't have, or not consistent with at the current moment. And so that's why I was, you know, why I provided this to you guys the last few meetings, try to get some feedback, because it's like, I want to know what's some of your priorities with some of these goals and recommendations, so we can derive language to achieve these goals and adopt language to be consistent with what's in this plan. But yes, that's, that's kind of your, other than the application review and recommendation, that's kind of that main focus. So when we don't have it, for example, like the animal ordinance text amendment, like, if we have a text amendment, like I said, that's a formal application. It has to go through the process. However, if we don't have any applications, we could either not meet, or we can be proactive and take some of this and then provide recommendations to council on changes or updated languages without a proper application. It still ultimately is in the council's hands. They want to adopt it, but that's kind of that, that's that process.
Yeah, I guess my question was more towards if the ordinances don't yet reflect the land use plan, are you and the staff going to be kind of the litmus test as to whether or not an application meets the land use spirit?
The applica, app, what do you mean by application?
Or like a minor subdivision, right? Like if something, I'm not exactly sure, because I, to be honest, like one of the issues I was having is that I don't know which ordinances don't match the land use plan, because we have so many ordinances. And so I don't know where the disconnect is, if there, and if there even is one. So.
Yeah, I mean, my, I mean, I don't know if minor subdivision is the best example, just because once again.
Feel free to pick any, anyone else that might, that might apply.
Like if it's a rezoning, when I do the staff review, yes, I mean, I'm looking to see if it's consistent with the land use plan from the future land use map, which honestly, ours is not really correct. But, um, but basically like you're looking to see if it's consistent with the land use map, as well as some of the other goals and recommendations there. And, and so that's part of that staff report, was saying, you know, kind of that consistency. But yeah, I mean, even during your guys' review, I mean, you can point out something that's maybe not consistent with it or so on, but there's gonna be points where you're gonna have maybe eight consistent things, one inconsistent, but it's, is it still compliant with what's adopted today and that ordinance is the, the thing. So like that one inconsistency, if there's a new, if there's an ordinance adopted, then technically then it would, whatever they're submitting, then maybe wouldn't be compliant anyway.
I gotcha. So really, the priority needs to be making sure the ordinances reflect the current land use plan.
Yeah, it's just deriving language from the goals and recommendations here to be consistent with it.
Any other questions from council?
You know, it's interesting, though, that we're, I'll say caught up, the point that we can focus on housekeeping now instead of those other big projects, which, which really is a, is a good feeling.
Twenty-two, three years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I was looking back at your guys' minutes, and it was getting this thing adopted or getting it to the point of adoption, and then it was the Heritage District, and so it's been.
I mean, it was, yeah, we've had a lot, you know, now we're sort of.
It's been on the table for a long time. Because the last time I was on the planning board, we were working on it back then.
We've been, ever since I've been on the planning board, if we're in a land use plan, so.
Anyway.
All right.
So, yeah, I mean, just, just to kind of summarize, too, it's like, each year in a special, while I'm here, it's like, I want to review these with planning board, see what potential we've achieved and haven't. I mean, um, or think of ideas of how maybe we can beat some of these, because it's, once again, one sixty D kind of changed it where now all municipalities have to have this thing adopted. Some, some municipalities would adopt it and sit on the shelf for five, ten years and never get looked at. But now, yeah, I mean, council, when they adopt it, they have to have a consistency statement, it has to be consistent. I mean, all of that's challengeable, so it, it really kind of brings all the, the plans and everything kind of in a cohesive action.
Let me ask a question of council, you know, because it's sort of in, this, this, so far then, from the planning board side of things, but does, does the council have anything that, that they think that we ought to be addressing that maybe we don't know
I will mention, I know one action on it was the tree stuff, and that's already been worked out, and that will be coming to you guys soon. I've been working with the county on that, as well.
I mean, even if it's not ordinances, but, you know.
I think, I think the biggest push right now is just getting the ordinances cleaned up, because it's a headache for Hunter as he's trying to do his job and.
That's been going on since two thousand thirteen.
Yeah.
Full disclosure.
Since I got here.
What?
Ordnances.
Do you think?
They've been bad for a long time.
Currently, the ordinance is, what, like this? That's just arbitrarily.
Yeah, there you go, there you go. You're, you're, you're beating through the lines. Both your reading, Adam.
Assuming that we do a good job. Assuming that, that we do a good job, is it going to like, like the land use plan? Because it started this big and it ended up that big.
It depends. My goal is to, I mean, like I said, to kind of this section and take whatever the goal and intent, or the purpose and intent is, and then like, yes, simplify the rec- rec- the regulations, because problem with ours, it will, it just has either extra or have these regulations and it contradicts itself and then have more regulate, it's just like.
Is there any reason that signs or, or whatever it may be, signs are in, you know, half a dozen different places, you know, or should they?
It's, it's as simple as a, it's as simple as a cross re- cross reference. And yeah, it, ordinances, it, they're gonna, they're gonna cross-reference each other, because it will say like, you know, for more information or for additional regulations, see this. But our problem is that it then sometimes has those additional regulations.
To contradict the original.
And that contradicts the original.
Just seen it a few times.
So it's like.
So yes, it should get smaller.
Yeah. And, and it's also like.
You're going to get rid of the flowery words. You guys are going to do the exact same thing that you did with the land use plan.
And I think part, you know, in not casting stones at anyone in the past, it's, it's just evolved. And instead of going back and, you know, cleaning everything up, they just stack something on top. Sort, sort of like patches on software, you know, as my son-in-law tells me, you know, a patch doesn't replace something, it just stacks it on top of what's there.
And the, the village has also been working on their reorg- reorganization and whatever project since 2020.
The project that never ends.
Yeah.
Ordinance reorganization?
Yeah.
We've been working on it longer than that.
Yeah.
I wrote the RFP in 2020.
Yeah.
Hire somebody to do it.
The village contract I worked with, we're going to have a new codification software and everything, and they were supposed to go in and kind of reorganize to an extent.
Get rid of contradictions.
I've got a draft of that, um, and so part of like, I, I don't want to like backtrack, I'm waiting, I'm trying to get that off my plate before we really dive into certain ones. Like I know certain things like the sign ordinance or thing or landscaping buffering is another good example, that just has this like weird matrix and just doesn't really make sense from my point of view. But it has some good regulations in there, but it's confusing to figure out really what applies and where. Certain things like that might be our main focus until we get this reorg kind of finished, so then I can go back and be like, make sure we're not, you know, double, double doing work on what the, uh, consultant did for that.
You're, uh, didn't you say you just about finished up the, uh, the plan list?
Yeah, I've got all that from, from Keith. I need to follow up with him, because there was cer- I do have the tree planning list for the trees. There was other sections of that tree chapter that we were looking at, we buy, as in, for example, the tree removal and certain things like that. I mean, um, and I, I, when I last talked to Keith, this was probably November, December.
And he's the urban forester.
Yeah, he's the county urban forester that we're contracted with. He, he originally asked me, do we want to take this in small chunks or just all at once? And I just said, I think I asked you guys during the work session, how do you guys want it? And we said, just break it to us all at once. So I just need to follow up with him and figure out what certain sections, but, um, that should be done, I, I would say probably in the next month or two. But, um, but I mean, it's kind of, it's nice having some help like that to kind of some profession, especially in the trees, because I'm not a tree expert, but that's coming from a tree expert, so our ordinances will be better in that sense.
At the risk of going down the path and spot speaking specific ordinances, if it's okay with all you, want to keep the thing going here and move on to master plan for Marvin and Harris District? That's item number two, discussion of master plan. That's you, Michael?
Well, I just wanted to see where we're at, because it was PIM, uh, the last PIM, and a resident asked me about the heritage plan, and he, he brought that up, and I said, yeah, we've talked about it in the past. I think it's on council's, uh, council's things to do list, but I'm not sure exactly where it is with that, or if it's, if it's even in discussion. So it's really just an update from you guys, if you're even considering it.
Are you referencing the strategic plan or the, an actual doing, having count, like having somebody draft a like master plan with like renderings and stuff?
I would think the renderings. I think when you, when you put a visualization together, it makes it easier for people to see and understand. And we've talked about it ad nauseam in the past, and nothing really ever happened.
You weren't allowed to say the man.
That's, that's a very bad word back then, but now we've got.
God forbid we plan something, being the planning board.
Coordinated effort.
The correct term is vision plan.
Vision plan?
All right.
You know, we've decided on coordinated effort.
Is that the woke word or vision?
I picked that up at that conference down.
I mean, because we're finished, the Heritage District passed, and we're probably going to get some applications here relatively soon.
Yeah.
From what I'm hearing.
So the issue is, is, you know, how do you pay for something like that? Because I think we've gotten quotes all over the board in that, is it a joint? Because right now, to your point, we're, we're kind of like hoping and praying, we, that developer comes with the right idea, and we're going to say, yes, that, that's going to look good there, or, and we get agreement, and then what's the next thing and stuff? But there's no real, how does this look from, you know, 50,000 feet? Oh, if you're looking down on it, okay, they, they were smart to put homes in this area, you know, whatever it is. But I agree, it's just, how do you pay for it and what, what kind of cost or, I mean, if, if you're looking for a budget?
Cash.
Well, yeah, you do.
But are you talking with the other owners?
The people's cash, the people's cash is how you pay for it. No, but I mean, that's just it.
Talking to the other owners, is there a committee of all the owners where we're, where we're discussing anything, or we're just, we're just going, like they used to say, organically, which I didn't like.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I think from, and I'll speak for myself here, and I've been very clear about it to anybody that I've talked to, I'm not in the development business. I believe my job is to give the homeowners, the landowners, whatever, the options to do what they can do with their land. And then beyond that, it, it becomes organic, because, because the first time I put a rendering out there, guess what? You got a whole village is going to throw up all over it, and you just spend a lot of money on something, and someone will go, well, you're not, you're not being proactive.
But don't we have that already? Isn't the Heritage District going to have certain requirements that, I mean, so it's already there, so we're already in the development business?
No, we're in the zoning business.
Zoning, yeah, but we're showing everybody what we're, no, what we're doing is we're telling everybody what they have to do. All I'm asking, instead of telling, let's show people, you know, that, that's what I'm after. Words are hard, you know, words can be interpreted many ways, a drawing is seen.
Well, here, here's my little take on that. We've got, there's, there's only a certain number of landowners that are here.
Like a hundred acres.
But let's just, let's just say 90% of those go, I'm not doing anything, I'm not, I'm going to stay with my little keep out piece of land, I'm not going to touch it. We've created a plan that assumed that they were going to do something with it. And until you get all those landowners in here together and say, yeah, we're all signed on to this, and this is what our thoughts of doing my little piece of the park are going to look like, I think that, I think the worst thing we could do is come up with and assuming what someone else is going to do in that hundred acres. I mean, that's just my opinion, I could be wrong, and, and I'm, I'm open to listening to other stuff, but again.
But we're a landowner as well within everybody else. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying by ourselves, I'm saying in conjunction with everybody else. I'm agreeing with you that I don't think we should be the leader, I'm saying we should be a part of it. And we've met with these landowners in the past, we've had many meetings with these, we know exactly who every landowner is, and we probably have a pretty like good idea of what they want to do. I don't think it's a surprise on what people are going to do now after all these years.
Hell, the problem is, you know, is a, if we're not Charlotte with some huge pot of money, you know, they, you know, they throw stupid.
How much do we think this is going to cost? We keep talking it's going to cost money, but how much do, I mean, we, do we even?
There was quotes of, some of them were, in the beginning were over a hundred thousand.
Well, those were with the charrettes and, you know, they're doing everything for us. They take it from point A all the way to point Z. That's not what I'm proposing here. I'm proposing a simple, like you've said before, a 50,000, a 50,000 foot view from above to see exactly what it may look like, based on our regulations and our ordinances and our Heritage District ideas. We know that certain parts, like the church is going to stay there, this land's going, we know already certain things in that district. So what we can do is, we know what this is zone four and what, you know, we know that's, if he comes in, that's going to be homes. So it's, I'm saying put the pieces of the puzzle together, it makes it easier for this, if we want, if we're serious about doing something in here.
So, so could you, could you foresee like us, you know, whether we take it out the bid or whatever, is, we're, what we're asking is, give us four drawings from a 50,000 foot level, looking down on the hundred and some acres, knowing what we have and the acreage and how it's split up, which you could do easily, is saying, here's property owner one, two, three, four, all the way through this, and throw on a drawing, possibly four different ideas and renderings, and maybe take that to the public and say, how does this look? Is that, that's still going back to Jamie's point, you're, you're basically telling a homeowner XYZ, here's what we'd like, like you to do, and here's what the community would like to you to do, and then at the end of the day, it's not about that.
Is it part of the government's responsibility, infrastructure on, you know, we're going to displace all this land? Does everybody have a curb cut? Where's the parking go? Where's the water go? Where's the ponds go? Are we just going to let that happen organically? Are we going to have 12 curb cuts along this road and where's the park? We have no idea, do we? Where's the parking in the Heritage District? Anybody know?
So let me.
Where? I mean, but have you seen it? I don't know, we're talking about it.
How they get to it, how they get to it is still.
Exactly.
A mystery to me, but.
So we, we've created a Heritage District with no plan in mind of what's going to happen in this Heritage District. I mean, are we serious or not? I mean, let's get an idea of what it might look like, and then we might look at that and say, there's no way this can happen. And we waste it all the time.
And, and Michael, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but we don't have, we have zero power over what these people are going to consider to do. They may all say, we're not doing anything.
But do we want 12 curb cuts going along on this road? Each, each business gets their own curb cut coming into there?
No, I'm not, I understand that.
Let me just, let me, let, let me clarify a lot. One, um, each application for that are, is required to have a detailed site plan, renderings and all that. So, so in theory, you're going to get that pieced together. It's my recommendation that we don't necessarily need a master plan, because I've already talked to about five property owners that are very serious about this, and that their contracted engineers and stuff are doing exactly what you're asking, and it's not any money coming out, coming out of us. It, it's to kind of Jamie's point, it's like the property owner slash whoever they're contracting with, the developer engineer, are then taking it in their hands on to, trying to get what they want based off the regulations that we adopted back in January. Now, if those fall through, you don't see that happen in the next couple of years, then yes, I think a master plan to get back to the vision would maybe, maybe be something to kind of get the idea back on the table, but I don't think it's something that's necessarily needed right now, just because we're not, we're not the, we're not the landowner, it's, it's 13 individual property owners, and so it's, it would be very hard to then try to develop a master plan for each, for all 13 properties. My thought is if it won, I would hope to have it, you know, what we envision in the next five, 10 years, but let's say nothing happens in the next five years. I don't think that's going to happen, but let's just take, let's just say that's what happens. That's when we have to then consider, what can we do as the municipality on then trying to achieve this goal? And that's where that master plan would probably be, um, an option then, but I don't, I don't think it's something that's necessarily needed right now.
And John, didn't that group you met with a couple of years back with Grow Hit, they kind of looked at all those properties and said, yeah, this may be an area for, you know, this corner, maybe homes, or they, they were, they were suggesting things all the way up to get rid of Leafer Park, I think is what they recommended. So, which, you know, I mean, I think they were giving us some ideas without really telling us.
And I think that, you know, in reality, that sort of directed the ultimate, uh, small area plan, you know, that we came up with. You know, as far as master plan, you know, as far as the village is concerned, you know, they, I think, you know, you know, the individual landowners have the ordinance, you know, and venture, you know, you just arbitrarily use him, you know, you're allowed to do, uh, this type thing, this type thing, and this type thing, you know, and, and, and Mr. Let's allowed to do this, or this, or this, or some, but I think what.
I don't think anybody's saying that, yeah. Nobody's saying that.
I know, but I mean, and then the village, I think our part in this thing is, how do we cohesively tie the look together? That be with, with street development, signage, landscaping, sidewalks, you know, to tie.
We do have a picture of that in our plan and then with the streetscape, and that's.
But I mean, you know, that, you know, I'm going to be.
That, that's probably the easy part, I think, and maybe this is where you're coming from, because this is my, always been my biggest concern is, are the utilities or, you know, specifically like a driveway that, that goes behind properties to get to parking instead of having all these cuts? You know, I think initially we were talking about, you know, could, could the fourth, or not the fourth leg, but could that latest roundabout, whatever happens, um, you know, could you come off of Marvin Road to get to the back of properties? But there are all these utilities and sidewalks and things that people would have to share cost on and share like design plans on, and, and none of that is like, if you've got people working, you know, in, in silos, how does all that get done? And, and if they don't agree, like who, who's responsible for that? And I'm not saying we should be responsible for that, but like.
The developers responsible for, because they have, they have to, they have to pitch to us what they're going to do, and we're the ones saying, yes, that'll work, no, that won't work. And you're going to have, because we didn't do a rent, we didn't do a rendering of Marvin Gardens.
Right, so, so.
So they came to us.
We did a rendering of Village Hoppo.
Because it was ours.
This is ours, this is our village.
This is our village.
It's not ours.
Not building.
It's owned by, it's owned by a lot of people.
If I came up, I'm telling you, if, if someone come up with a rendering, and I own 50 acres here, and they put something up for my rendering, I'm coming after everyone sitting at this table going, that's bullshit. Excuse my language. You don't tell me what I'm doing with my land. You give me the option, I know, I understand, I understand, but I'm saying. You give me the options of what I'm, what I can and what I can't do with my land, the zoning, and I choose what to do with it for mayor. I think we're going, we're getting outside of our lane if we start to do something like that. We let them bring it to us, and we can pick it apart all we want. We can say that curb, you can't cut a curb in there, you can't do this, you can't do that. It'll let them change it on their dime, not on the village's dime, we're out, hell, we're out of money.
I'm just worried long-term, and we have one shot to do this. If we, if we screw it up, it, it affects this for 50 years and beyond.
You worry more about curb cuts and how everything comes together.
Traffic flow, like.
The detention ponds, utilities.
See, they have traffic reports for all of that. Don't have the ponds, you don't want any ponds.
Where, how you going, where's the water? The, oh, the, where are you going to do that?
It just, it just ponds are a problem. Have you seen the rendering? I've seen something, Terry Shook put something together.
We, yeah, we've ne- I've never seen it, it went missing or something.
I've heard about this municipal thing, but never seen one.
It's the even part in the room that no one's ever seen.
We've been to that presentation.
Whoever was at the presentation saw it and then.
That was the, what Mayor referred to as a hundred thousand dollar, him taking it from point A to point C. But there was something in there where a suggestion of what this village may look like, not have to look like, not dictating it's going to have to look like.
We've got that, that, it's a basic rendering, how you've even got somebody walking down the street, you know, you got all that stuff.
What was that again?
But I see what you're saying, you're trying to pave the road, saying these are some of the options, this is what we'd like it to look like. I mean, we, we allow one thing, and then he has a curb cut, by God, now you've given curb cuts to every single person. If that one person comes in and he gets a curb cut, and the person over there, and he has this business there, the second person has to get a curb cut, the third person has to get a curb cut.
Roundtable just disintegrate? Like, did the Knights of the Roundtable, what are they calling themselves?
Yeah, that was it.
So like, weren't, wasn't there an effort initially to get all of the owners on the same page? Have them try and come up with something and bring it to us?
Then there were big conspiracy theories on the rights of the Roundtable, we were trying to do something kind of disintegrating.
You just said that you had five residents that were working on their own for their piece of property and.
Yeah, and those convert, well, every conversation I've had with them, I, I'm the facilitator here. I'm trying, because I even had, uh, you know, I'll use Mr. Owens, I met with him last Wednesday and I said, like, you know, he's looking to retrofit his to whatever. And I said, well, Fenther's mentioned to me, maybe let's see what's, what Fenther's, see how you can tie in. Like, that's what I'm doing as staff already. And, and like, I know like Scott Lett and, and all that, I mean, there's certain things like they're tying in. You're thinking about curb cuts, like, the way the Heritage District is set up is that they're, they're supposed to put in sidewalk and the utility and all that. I mean, that's, that's part of their, their, um, application process and approval stuff. The, you're getting into the argument of what comes first, chicken or the egg? I don't know if there's.
But once you do one, it restricts what you can do on the next. Once you do the next, it restricts on which.
What do you, not.
To, to, to possibly save us some time on this, does it make sense to get back with someone like Terry Shook, whoever has a relationship, just a phone call and saying, okay, how have you done this in the past? Because we're not, maybe the first one is doing this.
He presented it to us how he's done it in the past.
But the issues with all those is that it's either one, two property owners or that the municipality owns it all. And like the brand, like the master plan you see in certain areas for, um, maybe in Charlotte, if it's like an outfit of a, of, an old industrial buildings and stuff, like most likely those are under one single ownership and that's what it is. Like, it's, it's easier to kind of get input of either who that owner is and or the elected body.
That's the easy way, without a doubt, when you have one owner. We don't have one owner, which makes it incredibly more difficult and incredibly more complicated.
But that's what you're missing, that's the thing though, is now we have created the regulations, which to every property owner, when willing, have to comply by. We can't, you're talking about like, the only other option, you're talking about curb cuts and infrastructure and stuff like that, is that if the village spent all the money and putting all of that in upfront.
Are you worried about this? So let me, you're the planner, right? None of us have degrees in this. So do you feel like it is well under control and that you're going to be able to manage all of it? Because there are, there's only a limited number of applications that could potentially come. So how do you feel about it?
I'm not, I'm not worried because I know the, the five property owners I've talked to, five, heck, six now, thinking about it, is literally probably 80 to 90% of the acreage in the Heritage District. And that, and that's the positive note is like what you're talking about with, with some of those, like one being.
I would love, I would love this, I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to say is that I'm pretty confident, and I, I mentioned this to council in the retreat, I'm expecting two to three applications this calendar year. It might even get more. And the variation is that you've got four, five large tracts, I guess if you're counting, oh, down through this is two individual ones. But really thinking about Fenter and Lett, like, those are the two prized pieces and or where the lot of this, like the mixed use, the, the commercial retail and all that doesn't come in. And I was actually thinking Lett might be further down the road, but I know he's already hired a contracted engineer and getting information and trying to now start that process. And same thing with Fenter was kind of ready to pull the gun back in June when this thing was first approved, or not, not approved, but first proposed to council. So I'm not worried. I really think you're going to see that development happen. The smaller parcels, if it's Will Owens, the old, um.
Crane store, White House.
Yeah. Those I don't really have an answer on, but it's ones that I'm not going to have an answer. I, I think that once again, as development happens around them, it makes their pro- property more marketable to actually tie in. Same, I mean, and same thing.
That's what you're hoping for, is that you'll get the five acre, the eight acre, and then people will tie into that.
Yeah, same thing with, with Will, with Will's property specifically. It's like, if he gets a developer on Fenther's and it kind of starts going well, like he can, he can either have that same, like tie in. Like, because they're, as a property owner, all they're looking, they're potentially, they're going to get money from either selling their property, however they do it. And so.
And if they work with him, they could actually get a quicker turn in line.
Quicker, yeah, and.
I mean, we're going to need easements across the board, you know, to go from one property to the other if we're, you know.
We got right away, I mean, there's certain right of ways already procured for, I mean, within the.
If we're parking in the back, we're gonna have, we have right of ways on easements.
What do you?
Well, then we can go from one property to the other. We have to, we can cross over one property to the next. If we're going from, if we have two landowners, you have to have a right of way, you have to have an easement to get on another property. So for example, if you're going from the Aldies to the QT.
Yeah.
There's a, there's an easement between those two properties, because you can go between the two of them. But if there was no easement, you couldn't go between.
There's not necessarily an easement, it's just that the parking lot is just fully connected.
But I know what you're saying. And I am sure that if Will and, and.
That's why.
Fenter are, are wanting to develop their properties around the same time, we can work with them to get.
And that's exactly why, if you guys recall in the small area plan, we identified the church parking lot as quote unquote mixed use just because the tie-ins, because it's a parking lot right now, I think there's an opportunity for the village, the church, whatever, whoever the combination is, to tie in and make that a public parking and have the developer for Fenther's lot pave it as part of their approval process. And there's some parking and it kind of ties in. Mike, that, there's, there's, the opportunities are there and that's what's actually really cool about this district and the way it's set up is that there's flexibility on all ends, but it's like, at the end of the day, it, the language is there to protect. Ever, I mean, our, the village is kind of a goal and it's just the surrounding property owners and so on. And, um, but there's that with the development agreement and stuff like that, that's where you kind of negotiate getting some of those extra stuff if it's having them pay parking lots. I mean, it's not a, it's not a new concept. I mean, we got that language in there and it's legal and, you know, council can make those requests to kind of, if it's due. Like, for example, Marvin Lee, let's say we had the sidewalk already put in, because we got that grant. And a developer comes in on Let's property in the long run and the ordinance calls for him that he's supposed to sidewalk there. Well, sidewalk's already there. We can ask for a fee in lieu of what he was originally going to pay for that and or ask him to put, I mean, you can have him do all side improvements. Um, I think the union, I mean, other places do it, it's just part of that approval development agreement.
Mike talks about parking event, but if you build a business, there's, I'm assuming now that the county has, if you have this many square feet and, uh, commercial property, you have to have so many parking places.
Yeah, that's in our ordinance.
It's in ours.
Okay.
And we have, I'm sure we have, uh, square footage per acre?
It's square footage based off the use.
Off the use?
Kent has a question.
Oh, Kent.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, just, you guys might have discussed this earlier, but would we ever consider going out to a couple of developers and showing them our, you know, thoughts as well as the land that might be available for development? And just have them go out and, and do their own analysis and, and, you know, potentially work with the landowners and come back with a, you know, a cohesive plan.
Uh, to be honest, I think that that's already happening. I've had two or three development people contact me about who owns this property and try to get them linked up because they want to develop, or they want to try purchasing and developing this property. So it's not like I have to necessarily reach out. Anytime that happens, I send them the form-based code, I explain them the process, what, what we're looking for, send them the small area plan, give them as much information. But I know I've had one individual ask me about Fenter and Let's property, Fenter and Let's property. I've had another one ask me about Let's property. So like, I give them the information, but once again, it, it, it comes down to they're still a, they're still a property owner and it's their right to do what they want to, if they want to sell it or whatever, we can't force them to do anything. But in my experience, there's always a number, that's all I got to say.
I'm comfortable, I mean, I think it's worth discussing.
It'd be better to have somebody come in and, and show the, pitch the entire development as opposed to just pieces apart.
That, that's what Michael has been suggesting.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's all going to come together.
Okay.
And, and that's what I'm saying, if.
And that's, that's what I need, an update and a review for instead, you know, and we, we trust you.
Let's say if it, like I said, yeah, if I, if it falls through and stuff, that's where it look like. I think that is a very valid thing to start thinking about is having a consultant come in and do a map because then something's not working, you gotta show to them what, but.
Well, that's better. It, it sounds like if you get the five acre and the eight acre first, they're doing the work that you're asking for, they're the developers. So that's much better. I was more very concerned about one acre, two acre, all that.
I would love to know how it looks.
Just a nightmare.
But we just don't own.
And that's not what I want, but if we're, if that's, that makes me feel a whole lot better. If we got eight and five, then they have to tie in. They have no other choice but to tie into it.
Yeah, and that's why, I mean, once again, when the form-based code, that's, you guys, the council adopted it, was, those aesthetic standards, all of that, like the visual of it has to tie in, the, um, placement of certain buildings is supposed to tie in as well as like when you're getting into the infrastructure and stuff like that, yes, that's in there and there's really, I mean, it's all going to tie in the long run. And we had, council had the conversation about the infrastructure and so on, like, if you get a majority of that, then it brings down the cost of potentially what the council maybe has to do to create that full connectivity if there is, and I think even playing where we're talking about like the patchwork, like if the smaller properties wait and you have like Fenter and Lett developing, you have sidewalk or something there, like now you only have this much of a gap compared to this of what potentially council could, could invest in and putting in.
And the little, the little property owners, it's advantageous to be able to.
Correct. It really is.
Absolutely.
And that's what they said would happen.
So if, I feel my, if you, you've got an eight and a five and they're coming first, that solves a lot of my concern over this. I was concerned the one is the, the small guy would go first and another small guy, and then we've got a problem. But if we're getting the big guys going first, that's really going to take care of a lot of my concerns.
Small guys are, are smart to wait.
They are incredibly smart to wait.
And that's what they said would likely happen.
And also with, with our, you know, having to come in and request zoning for each parcel. That gives us the opportunity, or not us, but us and, but primarily the council to do, you know, to do that.
Yeah. You know, because.
Have you thought about this?
Yeah, because, yeah, have you, yeah, have you thought about? And, and owner A is already underway, he's doing this. Owner B wants to come in and resign. Well, now we need to tie owner B in with owner A to make sure that this whole thing is cohesive.
And, and to be honest with you.
Instead of being by right.
What we have here is what we have here at the corner over there, and then we have this church here. And then we, we changed thankfully our town hall to a better looking than what we had, I think. And I, I'm pretty happy with what, how that's going. And I think that just feeds off of each other and you, you create a vision, look and feel and.
That's the way conversations is supposed to go. Good job, everybody.
Now if we could just get into the going.
What about, what about the park spaces? Because I know that was part of the initial plan and that certain percentage had to be set aside for public usage. And I know you'll get some of that, you know, potentially, but like what if the first group comes in and it's just straight commercial? You know, and it's going to start eating up a lot of the percentages and then the people who are left on the back end will not be able to take advantage of either commercial or, you know what I mean? Like, you're going to be left holding whatever percentage is left.
Ordinance, specifically on the mixed use parcels and really the, those two are, I mean, I know there were those two smaller ones, but that was kind of from a land use standpoint, not necessarily from the specific zoning regulation standpoint, but once again, kind of going to Fenter and Let's. And there was a 30% open space?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, which one?
And our, and the former Artry property across the street.
Yeah, um, a third, yeah, 30% open space. That's a requirement for them to, for their specific property in general. So that's going to, it's one, in theory, one parcel is not going to be able to develop more commercial versus anybody else because they still have the certain percentages they have to meet based off the, the ordinance for those developments. The smaller lots, I mean, those, I, and then we kind of discussed like, that's where some of that consistency with how the language is read because they, the commercial lots, or commercial only lots were kind of smaller. I think, I mean, from what I gathered and what, how the form-based code and all that kind of was raw, it was, once again, it was focused on 30% of those, those major larger parcels. But I think the goal was for to have 30% open space throughout the total district as well. And if you look right beside us where the, the wooded, I mean, that's not maybe public or open space. I mean, publicly used open space, but it's like, I think it will, once again, the, the intent of that full cohesiveness and it all kind of working out is there. But I mean, once again, each lot.
I think, I think it was also supposed, I mean, yes, open space, but I, I do think there was a, there is a real need for public use space.
Well, part of that, you know, it specifically says.
Not just pocket parks.
Yeah, well, it specifically says, you know, that it's, you know, that open space, the only way that that works is if it's open to the public and developed for the public and it's got, it's got these amenities associated.
Right, and it said, and it, no, not at the current moment, it could.
It could, right, but it won't, I mean, it doesn't seem like it will.
I'm just, I'm just mostly concerned about, you know, conservation style with, you know, you're just padding the borders around and, and putting like a walkway through it and that's public use. And it's just like, it doesn't actually get us any chunk that is truly usable and community benefiting.
That's where we come in, because it has to go and get approved by us before the plan is written. And if we don't like it, it doesn't get done, period. There's no getting around it. And that's what we're going to be looking for on the plans. Those are some of those options that we have full jurisdiction over whether it gets planned or not. So I don't worry about that because we're going to be able to make sure that that happens.
Correct. With it being that conditional zoning, it opens up the tables for kind of negotiation there. As in legally, council can deny the rezoning if they don't like the point, I mean.
For any reason or relatively any reason?
Relatively any reason. And basically it would just be, that's why we did the small airplane, because small airplane kind of outlines the, the intensity, there's open space and stuff like that, and it's like, well, it's not consistent with that, so we're denying. But, you know, council can also then ask like, oh, you know, we noticed that you have this view shed, whatever, like, that would be a perfect place for a amphitheater or whatever. I, I'm just, and, and so the, then the developer can be like, oh, you know, maybe to do, you know, do that because that's kind of a council's request. And if they don't, then once again, council can deny the application they want. Like, that's part of the, the way this is set up is to take all of that in consideration at the time of their, their vote. And so then, once again, when they're voting, they know exactly what they're getting, there's no if and buts about it.
All right, well, that makes me feel better that I have a ally or partner or something.
Well, it's, it's not just me, council as a, as a whole has the same idea of what we're looking for. We, we, this is why it was written in there to begin with. It's, it's, it's for the public to be able to enjoy this as much as possible. We're not looking for, you know, this generic, we want something special here. So this is, this is the whole thing that we're looking at very, very closely. And having this power of, you know, making it happen the way we want, that's, that's the whole reason why that was put in there. So we're, we're definitely going to be looking for, for things like that.
Power having a say, maybe.
Well, yeah.
I don't like that word.
You know, yeah, you know what, you know what I'm saying.
It would be different once again if it was like. Yeah, it would be, it would be different if it was like by right, because then legally council doesn't, if it was already by right for that, can, we wouldn't have that authority. And so that's why we did it this way.
Happened when we, we were suggested to back up and go this other route.
Because, yeah, if you would have resigned, then the heritage, like, once again, you can't force anybody to do it right away.
You'd have been in more trouble with by right, you know, so.
Because then you don't have that leverage to make them.
I don't know if Kent has another question.
Yeah, we did. Do you have another question? Yeah.
Put your hands down.
The, the best thing that ever happened to this whole process was Hunter coming in and catching that big, huge thing that could have been. No, I'm serious, I mean, that could have, catching that was, was key. I mean, we could have gotten into a lot of trouble if that wasn't caught. So, I mean, I got to.
Who hired that guy?
Yeah, I mean, I got to put the credit where the credit's due. So, um, thank you very much for that.
I didn't have a vote, but I worked.
We're going to die on that cross, dude.
Yes, I am. I'm going to remind everybody I had a vote.
There's, there's a joke at every meeting.
Yeah.
I had a vote. If it's okay, we'll move on.
Yeah, I'll just.
If I only had a vote, I need elections.
I'll get singing that.
Everybody would come with ideas. The annexation?
Yeah, next up we have annexation.
We got that on, uh, the last meeting when we were talking about, or the garbage meeting, or no, the president's council meeting, that's what it was. And they were talking in a.
The garbage.
It was a garbage meeting.
Yeah, it was.
Waste Services meeting. Strike the record again. Waste Service, where we have, uh, areas where homes next door to each other in neighborhoods, one's Marvin, one's not. Are we still voluntary annexation?
Yes.
Stay.
Yes.
And I just got five houses for Marvin too.
We did. Have we ever?
Wow.
Kent did.
Have we ever thought of going to neighborhoods and pitching it to a neighborhood? We can't do that.
We just had a discussion of that.
If you can get it to the door.
And I, I will tell you this, and we, we had them do a quick little overview of if we were to capture.
We had staff.
We had staff do a quick capture of if we could incorporate communities like this. And again.
Let's not mention it.
County, county was absolutely didn't, this fell on deaf ears with the county commissioners.
They don't want it.
They don't want it, okay? But that's okay, because I'm looking specifically for neighborhoods and, and bringing in certain neighborhoods. If we just did that with what we have on that map there, we would estimate it was like an additional $500,000 to our coffers every year in tax revenues.
That's my thought process there.
It'd be mean cost.
Boy, I would put together a market.
Well, not necessarily, because if you had a gated community and you wanted to keep that gated community, along with that goes, then you keep it.
But so you have professionals.
I have power for professionals.
There would be, we would have to have additional staff. That would be one of the only costs. There would be, we would have to have additional staff. That would be one of the only costs.
I mean, do it most government, hire it out. Hire it out. Hire professionals to do it for you.
What I mean is with the additional homes, we'd have to have a full planning staff.
So the 500 is reduced.
You're talking about a professional?
Oh, I thought you said, we don't know how to do these things.
No, 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 I, I think when, when you start looking at it, you, there's opportunities to get in front of, get in front of HOAs, but the problem is, nobody wants to pay a tax, but they don't have to. It's.
That's why we need.
I can't even get a meeting with these meetings.
Yes, we had a great example, and not to interrupt you, but we had a great example where Derek brought in what they could do at a park. We need to replace our equipment. He showed us $600,000. I looked at that and going, if we captured that, we could provide a, excuse my expression, kick-ass park with a lot of really nice things there, all new equipment for $600,000.
I thought it was $200.
Six hundred for the one he showed.
The one he asked for. Here's the problem that we have in trying to do that. They still maintain the benefits of being in Marvin, and here's the reason why. If, if someone over there calls 911, they'll, they'll dispatch the person sitting right here, and they go, they'll be there in less than a minute. If you told everyone there the next time you call 911, they have to come from Monroe.
That'd be a problem.
That'd be a problem.
Yeah.
And you know what?
Can we do that?
We tried.
Hammer it.
But you see what I'm saying? If you, if you, if you, you know, there are people over there that don't even know that they're not in Marvin.
Oh, some of them think they are in Marvin.
Right, and, and so, if you have the benefits of something you're not paying for, it's a, it's a hard fight to do it, but if you turn the tables a little bit, and kind of, kind of made it a rub, then they'd be like, you know what, we can consider.
That's why I'd say.
They still go to you for Park.
Well.
They still go to you for Park. They still, they still do all the things that you and I do, but it doesn't cost them anything.
Well, we, that's what I'm saying. We, we need somebody who's, who can convince them, who does that for a living, who can present it and say, these are the reasons why it's not, it's worth $500 a year for you because of A, B, C, and D.
We've already put together kind of that, because the issue is, also, it's, it's getting, it's getting us into the door, because if you're, if it's a existing subdivision, if you take PDS, for example, and it's not contiguous, the whole neighborhood has to petition to, um, to annex it.
It's a man with a mind, pay for it.
So if you, if you get into, let's say you get into the HOA annual meeting, and you pitch them, does a hundred percent of the people have to say yes, or?
If it's PDS, yeah, well, yeah, because their subdivision is split off into two different areas, so they would have to say yes. Because they're not, they're second, they're second.
But PDS has, but it's four, but P, no, Pyroness Downs has four, PDS is one.
PDS is two.
Where's the other one?
No, it doesn't.
Across the street, isn't it?
It, PDS principally here, but this little batch over here is, is, is also PDS.
I never knew what you were talking about.
But actually.
That's contiguous.
But it's actually, it actually contiguous with Robinwood, so technically, if you could get the, if you get the adjacent homes, it could be.
But, but, I, I agree, there's, there's probably that, that guy that can probably present it in a way, but we're putting together A, B, C, D, because we know that, look, we'll give you a say, you better hope we get it right with electing the right officials, because we don't have to listen to you right now. I mean, we don't, we don't have to listen to you. No, I'm, no.
Going with your best.
No, no, I wouldn't, no, my point is, my point is, we care about, we care about, we want them to be a part of it, but they have to understand that at, at the end of the day, they don't have a vote. They come to the voting booths all the time to vote, and we tell them, oh, you don't live in Marvin, but, but I wanna vote, but you can't. It's, it's, it was an appeal, first off, so we're, so you know we're on it, to the county commissioners. And again, a lot of them have individual lots that they don't want to have to adhere to a small town. I get that. I'm not concerned with, if someone has 20 acres and they're on their own, I'm not concerned with that, but if you put 20 acres and you put 300 homes on it, they should be Marvin. There's no reason, and what I'm looking for, what I was asking, is to get that help to run it up to state level, because it's really, it's not, it really has to be approached at the state level, because.
Our state guy is Marvin.
What?
Our state rep is.
Will us.
Yeah, and.
He is Marvin.
And, and, and it's like, it's like, that's where the pitch needs to be, so it, it's not where you have to go home to home, and you have to pitch, it, it's, it should, in my view, it should be, because we talked about this, every time we go to raise taxes, we're benefiting them, and they're not paying for a damn thing, and it's, why would we do that?
I trust our staff and everything, but I would say, if we're talking that much money, money, boy, I would invest.
The reason it's so difficult.
We were talking about putting up the playset that he was talking about. I said, hell no, I don't, no, I don't want to put up the playset, so they can, so you got, look how many people get to go play on that playset.
Look how many people get to.
That doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't pay a thing. And look at the small amount of people that pay to get to play.
Down the hole is bar.
Why would I pay $400,000, $100,000 to play to build a playset? That's, that is sad. It's sad, because we're taking away from one, so we're not doing for someone else. But if I'm a Marvin citizen, I'm going, why am I paying for, why am I paying for the deputy down here? Doesn't benefit me, I don't go pass that way unless I come into it to Village Hall. Why am I paying for a playset? My kids aren't even here, but I got a bunch of kids in Providence down south, they play on it all the time.
Or across the street. Could do this, I mean.
What?
Don't you think a PR firm could do this?
Well, we put together a packet. We put together a packet.
It's, it's still gonna be voluntary, and you could get, you could get a half dozen from one community, I'm telling you. I think it's, you're gonna be more affected from the state, because the state put us in this situation.
Well, yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Well, they can get us out of it, too.
Exactly.
They can take our orders if they're willing.
Oh, they can.
Yes.
Way, way back when, you know, going back to when Marvin was founded. The reason Marvin was founded, because at that point in time, state laws said that Charlotte could come over here and annexed us. You know, everybody, you know, they could then. They changed the law, and, and at that point in time, when they, you know, we created Marvin, we created a buffer for the, the province down south, and everybody else, because they couldn't get past Marvin to get to them to annex them. Then, of course, you know, now.
It was the same story with Waxaw, with Waxaw.
Waxaw, that's the reason that Valhalla is in Marvin, because they'd rather pay Marvin's small tax than Waxaw's large tax, because they, they were looking at that.
So we protected neighborhoods like PDS from ever being annexed.
We've buffered a lot.
We've buffered a lot.
Then the state changed the law again. Then you can't annex anybody involuntarily anymore.
But we have talked.
But you can, it's very hard.
And, and, and the real truth, the real truth.
Is, is he giving you any positive feedback, or is he just?
Population.
No, he's, he's agreed.
He's on board, yeah, he's on board.
And, and the real issue comes down to when we go to do a road in a neighborhood, and you may have a, we had it, Wedding to Chase, we had 26 homes that were, because in the middle of them developing, the state came in and said, no more forced annexations, so why pay a tax? So you couldn't stop a road repair and redo, and hop over that landowner, and then start again. We have to get an agreement with the HOA, so they, they messed, they messed with a lot of communities, and this would help a lot of communities.
What's, what's the timeframe? Where do you guys think on, I know it's a complicated, difficult.
When we had our retreat, we said that this was gonna be a big push.
Okay, good. So it's a, it's a priority for you.
It's a priority.
Yes.
There is a procedure for involuntary annexation that we can do ourselves. We're just banned from doing it for a few more years.
Why are we banned?
Uh, because we're the ones causing the law they changed in the first place.
Yeah, I brought that, and then I was told it wasn't the case.
Well, and, and. We're explicitly banned from the law.
And at a staff level, like.
It's a referendum.
I got you now.
All right, okay, so, we're gonna, to move on, and next, uh, next item, I have a discussion of community events. Kelly?
You said you want to talk about events and how to bring people together to, like, discuss issues. That's why I added it to the agenda.
That was private.
Well, that's, everything's public. I just wanted to see your pictures from Vegas. I didn't.
We can absolutely take it off.
I mean, sure, we'll go ahead and, yeah, I don't really remember what it was that I was talking about. Clearly, it was a good night for me.
To give you an update, we just had a meeting today, real quick, maybe Kim, you can just synopsis of the meeting with PRNG, and where we at with Marvin Day, and we'll talk about community events.
Kelly put something on the agenda. She doesn't remember what she wants to talk to. Now I gotta talk about it.
You remember what Kelly wants.
I, I can cuff, I, I can, believe me, I can go off the cuff.
Um, no, we had our Park Stricken Greenway meeting, and we talked a lot about Marvin Day, as we did with council at our work session, um, and it's coming along really well. We're gonna have a 5K, blood drive, lots of events at the park, car show.
A lot of money and sponsors.
Concert, gotten a lot of sponsors.
We're estimating over $25,000 in sponsors. Thirty-five thousand in sponsorships.
And that's, that's year one.
Yeah, it's year one.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's really coming along, um, so, you know.
We're gonna make this happen. It's gonna be here.
Are we shutting this down and having food trucks? What's the?
Yeah, so we're gonna have multiple food, we're gonna have food trucks.
One food truck.
Are we shutting down this road?
It's Jimmy's Burgers.
Mark Night.
It's cousin Joe.
No, it's, it's, there's really not gonna be anything here. It's gonna be Village Hall, Firethorn's gonna have an open house, Marvin Elementary School, the park, and the high school. Those are gonna be.
So it's gonna be a bunch of different.
Bunch of different ones.
Depending on the time of day.
Playing at the high school at the end of the night, and then hopefully Nashville. Band out of Nashville. Two, two bands, one is an opener, and then a Nashville band we have, and then be on stage at the field, and then at the end of the night, we're hoping if we can secure the, the property for fireworks at the end.
Saturday, May 21st.
And a car show, too. My cars.
You got batteries.
I like cars.
And. We got cars.
I want to see my Honda.
So, um, classic cars, maybe?
Yes.
Classic cars, fancy cars.
We're, we're working with the Marvin Ridge Band, and they, last year they did it, last fall, they had 180 cars. We're expecting 200 cars.
Wow. That's exciting. That really is.
This is exactly, this is exactly kind of what I wanted to talk about, but also, especially with the Heritage District, starting to move things closer to center, because I think what ends up happening is when stuff happens at Eford, out of sight, out of mind, and people just don't go, because they, they might, there might be one sign here, if they're not tuned in to the newsletter, or whatever, but if things start happening in our, you know, general, you know, in, in the center of Marvin, I'll call this the center. Can we call this the Red Hot Center, like Valentine? I think you'd get a lot more activity, and a lot more families participating and things like that, so I don't know if there is going to be a shift towards starting to have things next to Village Hall, instead of so much being focused at Eford, because.
Yeah, I think, I think parking comes into play, and it's really hard to keep stuff in just Village Hall.
Is it possible to park people at the elementary school and get a shuttle bus?
We, we actually talked about that, I think, as some way to do, we did something about shuttles for Firethorn, wasn't it?
You did a shuttle for the groundbreaking ceremony last year.
So, those are things, I mean, we just, what happens is, in these committees, they keep adding things, and it's like, how, how you do it. I mean, this is, this is kind of taking on a life of its own, and there's a lot of support from the community. Kohl's is, is looking to be a big part of the 5K, um, and, and other big, we, we got only two platinum, which is 7,500 donors, two gold, which is 5,000, the rest are silver, which is 1,000, and then bronze, which is 500, so, and, you know, I mean, it, I, I, I think, I think we're gonna see, is, is this is coming together with staff, with limited staff, but I, I think.
Five years, we'll have Snoop Dogg.
There you go.
But, talk, talk to him over there, he's, he's the booking agent. All right, um, can we move on?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
You're the one that wants to talk all the time.
Yeah, you're the one that, you're the one that added.
Yeah.
My next one's gonna be even.
What was this one again?
HOA current agreement with sidewalks and village owned roads.
We had a neighbor in Firethorn who cut window, you guys taking over the roads, which means taking over the sidewalks. Okay, good. I would like for our neighborhood, and for every neighborhood, to explain exactly what you are doing with the roads slash, because now everybody thinks that they have a crack in their sidewalk, that the village is gonna come out and repair it.
Christina, do you want to speak on to this? Because I think it has to do with maintenance agreements.
Is she?
She's on there, she's calling.
She's the phone.
If I could.
Go ahead, Christina.
We're actually in the process right now of, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
We're in the process right now of making a sidewalk maintenance policy, where it basically is going to address safety issues, not aesthetics. So, um, simple cracks is not gonna be a, a major concern of ours, unless it causes, you know, tripping hazards or some kind of safety hazard. Um, there are certain sidewalks in Marvin that we do not maintain, and those would be the, some April days that have made the agreements with the village. Firethorn is not one of those, and we do actually maintain the sidewalk to Firethorn, Wedding to Chase.
Okay, good, so you're saying.
I don't know the others, I'll talk in my head.
Firethorn you do not maintain, so the CCNRs would supersede.
We do.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
Well, Christina, but, uh, in our CCNRs, and the, and the Firethorn CCNRs, the neighbors maintain the sidewalks, but you're saying that supersedes the CCNRs, or not?
Um.
That's where the confusion is coming in.
The sidewalks are in our, yeah, the corners are in our, the sidewalks are in the right of way, in which case it's our responsibility. So, I mean, if they're pushed back further than the right of way, then the CPRs would, would take precedence, but my thought process is they would probably be in the right of way.
Yeah, when.
We'd have to go out there and monitor it.
Well, here's the question, I mean, can we get something from the village, because it, it kind of caught fire a little bit, and, you know, now it's, people are wanting to know how to, how to get you guys to come out and look at their sidewalks, and I'd rather have a statement from the village saying, here's what we're, and it sounds like you're almost there, Christina, you know, here's what we're covering, we're not doing aesthetics, you know, we're doing safety issues. If we can get something real short and sweet that we could put out to our neighbors that would come, you know, it would give everybody, uh, you know, information that they're requesting. Because I don't wanna, I don't wanna misquote.
Sidewalks is a hot topic.
Yeah, we can get that out, no problem. I, I did actually send, you had a, you had someone on your board email me back and forth, back and forth for a couple of days, and I did email him something to the, to the line. I cannot remember his name right now.
David Law?
But, um.
David Law?
That may be it.
Yeah. Yeah, because he's the one that told me, and then he told, it was kind of like the Pert commercial.
Yeah. The thing is, the only thing is, I would caution Christina, as we start looking at these things, you know, we had developers that built our, our neighborhood in Firethorn, you know, not all the sidewalks are even, some of them are on a slope, and is, is that gonna be considered a safety issue? Because they're on a slope? But that's how they were.
I twisted a knee.
Yeah, my, well, that's my point. I mean, most runners will run on the road and not on the thing, but, so, how detailed we're gonna be on what's considered a safety issue? I, I see, if I see something coming up, or roots, or that.
Can I postpone and tell them, listen, the village is working on a statement, and they'll get it up within?
Well, we gotta do the policy. I mean, unless you want a statement.
Yeah, and I'll add, Christina, I've been working on that, I saw on your board that you said for either April work session or something, if we want.
There is no work session in April.
Or not, April, March work session. Um, but I could have, I can chat with her to get.
Thirty days?
Yeah.
That's fine.
We'll, we'll say. You would say, too, within 30 days in writing.
That's, that's good enough. Perfect.
That's it.
Okay.
Anything else we can cover for you in your neighborhood, Michael?
The other things were village issues.
I'm gonna need, I'm gonna need a motion to close the Michael Lovell Show.
Strike that from the back, you know?
All right, in all seriousness, I'll, with all our agenda items, I just need a motion to adjourn. Calls in favor?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Michael? What? Nope, you do it.
Call out motion. There we go.
Move it, motion on, on seven.
Guys, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Excellent.
Appreciate it. An hour and a half.